Okay, good evening Stillwater, good evening. I called to order the April 27th, 2015 city council meeting. And we just are going to go straight to general orders. First of all, thanks for everybody for being here. Under general orders, we have items A and B. Item A is the discussion of the process for filling the vacant city council seat. Mr. Dorman, what options do we have?
Well, according to section 2-10 of the city charter, which was adopted in 2007, there's basically, the first option you have is to, as a city council, within 60 days of your seat becoming vacant, which was last Monday night, you can appoint someone to the remainder of your term of office. If you don't get someone appointed within 60 days, then under the charter, you are mandated to call a special election for that purpose. And there would be a, basically, a winner-take-all election that could be held as early as July of this year for that purpose.
So July is the earliest we could do an election?
Yes, now.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have questions at the city council? Questions for Mr. Dorman or discussion?
If we appoint someone, then they would have to run, if they want to stay on the council, they'd have to run next, or they'd have to file next February. Would they be eligible for two terms or just one more term?
Two terms. The same year that this charter amendment was adopted, another amendment was adopted that basically does not count any appointed term towards the term limit requirement.
So the applicant, or whoever applies or whatever, if we appoint, they would be able to serve out more terms, pretty much?
Right. It would be the same as being elected the first time. Because the term limit focuses on successive elections and not just on mere time in service.
Okay. Discussion?
I think publicly, there was some, a little press to do an election. And I think that is one point that is probably a negative piece of having an election. I'd hate to have someone not really waste six months by being elected. And so I would, I really think that appointing is much, much more useful for the new person and the council.
It is. Well, we all like an election. It is time, the time that it takes. And if you wouldn't have someone until July, we go through all of May and June without a fifth person up here, which does matter. It's costly to run a campaign. We all know that. And then someone has to turn around and do a campaign again starting next February. So I agree that an appointment is probably the better way to go.
Oh, no, there's no doubt in my mind. That's the only way to go.
Only way to go.
I agree. I mean, you two have been, or I guess you've been here before. You, you on the council, so I mean, you know.
That's the math we went through. I mean, it just will take so long to get an election held. Asking someone to go through all that effort just to repeat it in just a few months seems pretty inefficient. So in this kind of a situation, an appointment makes a lot of sense.
So I guess we need, if we're all agreed, do we need to make a motion on making an appointment? Or do we just get to discuss it?
The charter presupposes that you're going to go through the appointment process.
Okay.
So you're actually, you have to decide that you don't want to have an appointment before you have to worry about that. So really, all you need to do at this point is to select the date for making the selection and then establish the process under which you want to make the appointment.
Okay. So we have, we told people last week that the, the form was on the website. We have received some applications. When would you guys like to, we will start, I guess, with, it was done last time. There was an interview process that we'll go through around the horseshoe where we'll bring them up. I would like to see that done May 4th, but I don't, I'm open to suggestions.
How many apps have we received today?
We have the deadline, I guess, this Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. And so far, we've had four applications.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that. I knew there was some discussion of wanting to do this as quickly as possible. So we put deadline to make it possible for you to have all the application copies prior to Monday the 4th. Now, should you decide to go longer, we could certainly change that announcement, but it's been out there and set for that would facilitate you to move on.
Okay. So what do you guys think? May 4th is our next meeting. We can certainly ask, Patty, how will it work? Will you ask each applicant to show up to the next city council meeting? Is that how we do it?
I think that's what we call it, is asking the people.
Mm-hmm. You there?
I think the first step is we'll verify the legal application, make sure they're qualified. And always qualified, if they're legally qualified, they'll be invited to come to the meeting. What would you, what would you like when we inform them? Should they prepare, like, what, a five-minute presentation?
They, I think, I would like to propose, but I wanted everybody, maybe they will answer questions. And I would like to have them come into the council room one at a time, so no, so they don't hear the questions, so it's fair to everybody. And we ask them certain questions, a little bit of sequestration. And, and then maybe give us a week to decide? What do you think?
Joe, what was the process last year? I mean, last time?
Oh, that was a long time ago. But I think we gave everybody five minutes. We were allowed to ask the questions, give and take. We didn't think about the sequestering, which I think is a great idea. And I think we did have about a week in between for the selection. How busy is the agenda going to be next Monday? In addition to this?
It's not, it's not, it's not an extremely heavy agenda.
Could we make a decision next Monday instead of delaying it to the 18th? Because 18th is going to be pretty heavy. I mean, could we, I mean, it's not like we can, if we decide next Monday, yes, if we need a week, we could make it a week, right? Doesn't legally have to, we don't have, we can make a decision or not, right?
Right. I mean, the charter's silent as to how you go about doing it. So it's kind of up to you. I believe the night that you all heard the applications last time, that was the same night that you made the selection, so. And we had over a dozen applications called. Right. You heard, I think you heard about a dozen presentations and asked, you had a uniform set of questions that was asked to each applicant. And then, then you had that process that, where you picked, everybody picked their one, two, three, and then you averaged it out. But, but there's, you're not bound by that. Because another council I know, I sat with, actually, the councilors just brought the names of nominees. And from that list, they chose one. So I mean, there's a lot of different ways to go about it.
Well, I think after we hear from each candidate and ask questions, it'll be easier to decide. Maybe we want to wait till next week to decide if we're going to decide? Or do you want to, you want to just go ahead and do it?
If we have that option, you can, after the, you hear all of them,
you could decide to try to do it that night and make a motion to pay for it tonight.
Okay.
So we can put it on the agenda one way or another?
We'll put it on so that you have the maximum room in terms of what you want to do. So if you choose to make a decision that night, if you coalesce around a single candidate that evening, then there's no reason why you couldn't go ahead and make the selection. But if you choose to wait, then you could wait and defer it to the next meeting, or have a special meeting, or however you choose to do that.
Perfect.
Mayor, it'd be helpful if Wednesday is the closing date. If we could get the applications prior to Monday night, that would be advantageous to being in a position to take an action, perhaps, based on how they answer questions and how they present them.
I'll scan them anyway.
Okay. And also, I'd like to ask each counselor to come up with one question you would like to ask. And to keep the questions private. And then, when we have the, the process next Monday, we can each ask. And we'll ask everybody the same thing. But everybody will be out of the room. So if we have four people, it shouldn't take that long. If we have, I hope we have more. And we have until Wednesday at 5:00. And if anyone has any questions, do they just contact the city manager's office?
Patty will be glad to.
Patty will? Okay.
Glad to know the information. I'm sure.
Okay. All right. So we're decided, right? Everybody in agreement?
Sounds good.
Okay. That was easy.
I will say, you know, from all the people we interviewed last time, it was really amazing how many quality individuals did apply. And it was really good to receive the applications and hear them talk about Stillwater and their service. And, you know, I hope that even if there's only one person who can appoint, we can get the others involved somewhere else on a committee or at an advisory board, or positioned to run when some of us roll off, so.
Absolutely.
I think that's a great thing to say, Joe. Already, I think that, you know, just the interest that's been generated by this has really been very exciting. And it is hard to think that everybody can't do it at once.
I know a few of them are out in the audience tonight, so thanks for being here. Okay. Let's move on to item B. Review and discussion of the, it says 2014-2015, but I'm assuming it means 2015-2016?
2016.
Okay. Operating budget. Mr. Galloway, do you have anything before we start discussion?
Yeah, just briefly. I'll mention that, of course, we presented to mayor and council at our last meeting, the general budget. Didn't have it all in a document. This is a new, new format that we're using. We're trying to get more conversation, if you will, and have a budget available to the public that gives the numbers. It shows what our budget is for all functions. But there's descriptions of what you can expect, what this budget is intended to accomplish in the very steering. And we, again, we did that verbally last meeting, but we put it in the document. We've also added the list of capital items. That is, the list that managers, administrative team have gone through, a list of needed capital items that's nearly tripled what you see here from the value. We've had to make some decisions to allocate that among highest of needs. We are not projecting any significant growth in revenues that come in here. I think the conditions of the economy and what we've been experiencing is that it's just been fairly flat. We don't see anything on the immediate horizon to cause us to project an increase. So we've tried to deal with a fairly flat projection in our budget. We had spent some time since the last meeting going through the numbers and trying to refine a little bit what we have available. Again, the numbers are presented in the document. Hope you've had a chance to look at those. I don't think there's a need to, and the public, of course, have seen them and they've heard that it's prepared tonight. And they would be, I won't labor you with going through all of those numbers. But again, that in a nutshell is what we have prepared. We've also have in the document the state-required format of the seat that will eventually be the basis of a resolution for adopting the budget. Again, with our discussions, these numbers may change as some council direction. Tonight is intended for you to have an opportunity to discuss what you may have heard from constituents between the time this was presented and your day-to-day activity, what you may have heard from citizens tonight, what your personal thoughts are. And with all of that, in discussion and questions you may have for staff, they had many teams at the table. Mr. Blankenship's out of town. But that will give us the guidance to go back to the table, so to speak, and make any adjustments to this that you feel are appropriate. You don't have to give us exact numbers for anything, but say we'd like to have an increase. Give us a realm of virtue or a decrease in something. And we will then make the modifications for our next meeting. And again, depending on that, the longer wait, more active we can get. We originally intended to come back on the 4th with a revised version. We still may be able to do that. I think we were looking at possibly a public hearing and adoption on maybe 18th. I think there's still some work to do this. I'm beginning to think that maybe presenting it May 4th may be, but I'm thinking that the actual public hearing and all may go to June 1. So I think we don't need to get rushed. We've still got time. It's nice to have it done in May, but if we get it done in early June, we'll be interested. So I don't want to rush to, when you get it done.
So public hearing, probably, June 1st?
Yes.
I did have some people ask about that. And we'll post that and make sure that we have it available through the news.
Unless you just like it the way it's printed right now, we could probably make it. But I don't think, I think there's some changes there.
There might change this a little bit. So I think I'll just open it for discussion. Counselors, do you want to start with what you heard tonight? Or you want to just kind of blend what you heard with what you would like to see? And we'll just go one at a time? Go ahead.
We can't go forward a time?
Yeah, well, you can go right ahead.
I do want to thank you, the staff, for putting this together. And I appreciated the narrative at our last meeting. It was, it was very interesting and informative to hear the staff telling about what they were doing. And as they talked more, their pride and excitement about what they were doing was really palpable. And that is nothing that you can get from a list of numbers. So I appreciate that. And I do like pictures. And I really need things simplified for me to get the big picture. Because I don't want to get lost in the little pictures. I think the one thing that I have heard and thought about the most is our commitment to the transportation. And we had a, had we not talked about a $4 million commitment for that, and it's down to?
Page nine, $2,003,300.
Yep. Which is pretty significant. And I think, just in the year that I've been involved in city council, I don't think there has been one party, one fair, one running into somebody on the street that hasn't been fixed the streets. So that.
That seems to be the top priority for most people.
Seems to be.
Certainly.
I might add one little footnote to that. I mean, I could just, we need to remember the, we're still collecting the half penny sales tax for another year. And that is separate from what you see here. The half penny sales tax, which generates $3.5 billion, is in another fund, which you'll find on the big spreadsheet. That is appropriated by project, as those are presented and defined to. The half penny does include a small amount for neighborhood streets. Up until just two, three years ago, we had very small amount in the transportation department to do maintenance and repair and so forth. And we, the first year, we were able to put $4 million in there. Basically, what Dr. Peak and all the studies have done, you know, is an amount we need. And that was set as a policy by council to say, we want to try to put $4 million per year in every year. And we've been trying to follow that. Again, this year, we had so many needs, that's, we were torn quite a bit in the discussion of these capital items, which we wanted to do. But we are prepared to do some scrubbing of other things in the budget if need be, to try to find some money to try to get closer to that goal. In fact, just let you know that.
I remember years when we were dealing with the economic downturn, where we were lucky to put a few hundred thousand dollars into transportation. So, you know, to do four, or three, or two is a huge number compared to what we were doing just a few years ago. So if the money's really, the solution is some sort of a transportation bond issue, that's really the solution. And I know we put one forward a while back, and it didn't pass for whatever reason. It's going to be very difficult to get our roads in the position we want from our operating budget and the half cent sales tax. So I'm still hopeful that someday we can put something together that can take us to the level that we want to be. This operating budget isn't going to get us there, even at, even at $4 million. What I'm concerned about is not so much any particular line item, but just the overall economic situation. And I think it's wise to wait as long as you can, because I just, I just have this sense that sales taxes can continue to fall. And that's going to become more evident as months go by. And Marcy, have you, you've projected out for the next calendar year or next fiscal year? And you're thinking, we won't have a downturn? You're actually thinking level?
We budgeted it flat. We, I think, a 1% increase possibly, which is $300,000 in total. But, yeah, we left it flat. We seem to have had quite a little bit of a boost from the oil industry, oil and gas and the drilling companies that have been in. And that seems to be tapering off. We see that in both the sales tax and our lodging tax. And so, you know, we're, not that that wasn't a pleasant couple of years event, but we're going to be going back to what's probably more historical for us. That's my thinking.
So what level of flexibility do you have in this budget to respond to a 10% reduction in sales tax? 5% reduction? Pick your number.
Well, if you take, if we're experiencing a 5% to 10% reduction totally through the year, that could amount to, you know, $2 or $3 million in the whole year's time. We would have to come back to the council in mid-year, probably. We'll, we'd probably track it. If it happens on a month-to-month basis, we start to withhold approval of some materials and supplies. And we use that as an, we hold filings in position. We do all kinds of things to postpone the things that we need if we see that the revenues are going down. If we get to mid-year, then it's very likely that we would come back to the council and suggest you amend the budget downward. And we would show you what costs and what items would have to be, we would have to suggest a forego for the balance of the year. But I think, I think, again, looking, I think, I was going to say the same thing, Marcy, I think that a lot of the downturn in sales tax is, you can track it with the hotel occupancy and the waiting of oil and gas field activity right now. But I think the current levels of sales tax we're getting to is not affected by that anymore. I think we're down to a pretty minimal level of those influences. So it should be pretty stable. But again, we'll watch it every month and allow for that. But we've had really healthy sales tax growth in other sectors outside of, you know, the wealth field is impacting. It's difficult to tell which person from which activity is shopping here. But I think we've also done some new openings ahead of us. I think the opening of some of the stores in our Tiff district will begin to attract some additional tax dollars to the community. Not, it's going to make millions of dollars in business, but I think it's going to help stabilize the projections. We've got some other new businesses opening in the downtown area. So I think the sales tax base is expanding as well. I'm not really concerned about flat projection. I'm not optimistic about 30% projection. But we do, we, we monitor very closely, and the staff can probably attest to it. A lot of times, when we say no, it's that way. And we can, we'll find ways to adjust.
One of the things we do in our policy is that, for all the capital items you approve, the city manager has to actually approve them again before the department's allowed to purchase. And they send through a form that he has to sign just for that purpose, in case we're seeing something that hasn't really, you know, borne out, but we're watching it. And before, when we did have the downturn in the economy, I don't know if you remember, but we came to mid-year and proposed the amendment. And then we came back somewhere in the third quarter and actually had you approve it. And we were able to make an amendment of $4.5 million at that time. Those were things where we just delayed a lot of things. We didn't fill positions that were unfilled. But we, we did a lot of scrubbing and looking through there. And we managed to do that without loss of personnel and laying anybody off. We did, I think, come up with several contingency plans. One to cut hours at certain facilities, one to start cutting services, one to lay off personnel, several different, kind of standby-ready plans. Kind of looking at each one as to how it would affect the community. So I think we learned a lot during that time period, kind of knowing where the pullback would be first and what, what, at least the council would probably wish for us to do first. And we just kind of had those ready to stair-step in if it got any worse than it did. So I think, just, you know, having that cautious approach and watching quarter-to-quarter, month-to-month, we'll be prepared to do the same thing again, should it ever happen.
Well, I remember back then, we were, we made it a priority that we didn't want to see any current city employees laid off. That was like a last resort. And it was like item Z. Everything was about deferring, delaying.
Right.
Keeping positions open.
Right.
To make sure we don't get in that position. I hate to be Johnny Raincloud, but, you know. I know the, I'm just in the mode with university thinking about budget reductions. And I know it's a different economic situation. But the fact that we will be probably cutting and retrenching is going to affect the local economy a little bit, too.
We talked a little bit about, and I don't want to say, this, when I say this word, I don't want everyone to freak out, but we talked a little bit about maybe a hiring freeze or waiting to hire some of the positions, or looking at the positions that are open name to see which ones we can hire to save some money or put some back in the capital, or even possible, no raises. Could you give, you know, I think Joe makes a good point that I know you made, is that, you know, when I look at what we're supposed to do, I think we're supposed to kind of be in line with kind of what everyone else is doing. And if the state of Oklahoma isn't hiring or isn't paying people more, and if OSU isn't hiring.
We'll be hiring.
Well, but, you know, I just don't think we should be sitting here just jumping up and down. I think we should be taking steps, because obviously something's going on.
Yeah, I, let me, let me respond to that. I can't give you an exact number. I mean, we always have a lot of jobs open because of turnover and transition, people retiring, people taking other jobs. So we have, this budget has authorized, because there are positions that have been authorized for some time. There's a significant number of them that are always.
Yep. Right now, I think, what, Mr. McLean, we looked at, like, 40?
46.
I think that it might be, I don't think we're in an economic situation that we aren't saying, let's, let's not hire any of those 46 people. Some of them are key positions. Some of them are much-needed police dispatchers. Some of them are police officers. Some are, some of our people in engineering design that's going to delay progress if we don't have those kind of positions filled. Some of them are people who operate the solid waste vehicles. We've got to run our trash. I mean, there's some positions I just think we couldn't delay. What I would like to do is look and really examine all those positions. And again, that's one of those things that's going to take us, not overnight, but I want a little more time, to come back and say, we could realize a savings of, I'm throwing out the hypothetical, $800,000. If 20 of these positions are delayed anywhere from five to eight months during the year, that savings would generate that. And then we could put that out there. I think that's more prudent than just like, let's just freeze them. I don't think we're in a panic economic condition before we start. I think it would be a disservice to the public. So that's something we can look at. Again, we did not propose any across-the-board salary adjustments. That's just not even discussed. So, we've already built that even, so we don't have to worry about that part. We do have, you know, we can look, we can look at that, examine it very closely. You know, which often leads to other questions about raises. Sometimes you say, "Well, let's probably raise it." Well, we have a couple of situations. We have, we still have a step pay plan, where people are performing adequately and satisfactorily on their anniversary days, they're entitled to stepping the pay plan. In our situation, a lot of people aren't in that, because we had a lot of long-term employees that don't have any steps left. But you also heard, Glenn, we were describing the consolidation of the operations plan that Mr. McClain and Mark White and Dan Holg got so excited explaining to you. One of the, one of the benefits of that program is that those people are all becoming cross-trained, and it's all, there's several parts of that that are designed when you have this, when you achieve this additional level of certification, you're a much more valuable employee, and that is an increment. And I think if we lock those increments while in this early stage of trying to really develop that, it may be a little bit of a hindrance, but I'd like to look at that a little closely. But there may be some areas, I don't have a thought that true is too, there's some complex ways we could look at that, but there may be some areas where we could freeze some things. I hate to use the term freeze, but I would be willing to look at that. But I just want that caveat out there. I don't, I don't want to freeze things unless we just absolutely have to, that's going to have a negative effect on what we're trying to achieve to keep delivery services going. Does that make sense?
Would you let us know, maybe the next report that you give, council? How many people are up for the step, up for the pay raises? And then, the last time, when Mr. McClain was talking about the consolidation and the efficiencies, and how, you know, we have better trained employees now, which is always good for the city, and they can work across boundaries, which is great. Maybe if you could show how those efficiencies have helped us, and what savings, or, I'm just thinking, if we have the same budget, or we don't have more money this year, how are, how are we going to spend the same level differently than last year? And maybe that's what we need to see. So maybe showing us the step, and showing us the consolidation and the efficiency, and maybe what we're saving.
A lot of, a lot of those things, a lot of the reduction in equipment, and a lot of those reduced costs took place at the beginning of this year, or late last year. I realize some of those, but there's other savings we realize we can report on those. I, I think, and again, I don't have specific numbers, but knowing what I know about the numbers. I, I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I think those kind of things that we were just discussing was with some limits. And I know you're, we're talking about your concern on the streets right now. To go from the 2.6 to in the neighborhood of 3.6, 3.5 is achievable without doing a lot of hatchet jobs and other capital. I'd like to have an attempt to come back and show you where we could save possibly, or at least restrict some expenditures, some expenditures to be able to accomplish that. Because I realize the transportation street is a very high priority. So, but if we, if we go back and apply those things to achieve that, it'd be a little harder to go back to that same milk as any of the other items, but...
That would be nice to hear.
But I, I think that's, I think that's doable, and I'd be glad to go back and take a hard look and explain those.
Well, I know, Councilor Naher and Councilor Darlington. Joe, counselor. Have you heard the same thing about transportation about...
Always. Everybody was comments on Rose.
So, and I make four, so we're all hearing the same thing.
And your point about thinking about it differently, in the sense of the bond issue, is really valid, also, and important.
Yeah, that's, that's something I'd like for us not to lose sight of. I mean, we're, we're trying to fix the situation for this coming year, but Mr. Weaver is definitely correct. We don't like additional taxes.
And this is just a draft.
But there's a reality, and we, what a cost to maintain our streets, and we need to, you know, give our public the information about that, and some options on how we're about to make that. We can, we can continue to have this policy, you know, retaining this level. When you have a little bit of a downturn, this is...
It's just frustrating that you try not to fall behind any more than you have to, and you do that year after year after year, try not to fall any more behind than you have. You're still falling behind.
Yes.
You're not making progress. So, we'll continue to hear about Rose.
What other things did you hear tonight that you feel like staff should know? Maybe they heard it, too.
The people that I spoke to were very pleased, liked the format, liked the opportunity to talk to staff, and on a personal basis, and very positive.
I heard the same thing. I heard a few suggestions, but nothing really that would affect the budget in a big way right now, nothing that we have to, except for the, the transportation, the roads.
Well, we've got a pretty responsive team. We'll get together and work on that, and see if we can make some adjustments to kind of take care of that issue for this coming year.
I think the staff's done a great job on...
Not so much tonight, but what I've heard over the last year, or two years, more than anything, even more than roads, is water rates. You know, trying not, people want to hope that we don't continue to raise water rates year after year. And that's, that's at least as high to me as it is trying to put money into transportation. So, I hope the budget gives you some flexibility to mitigate that.
Yeah, there'll be, you know, we've had our study done, and we had, had to do some revisions, and we postponed that. Well, we want to discuss that with council. And it's not, it's not an all or nothing kind of proposal at all, that it's going to be, Mr. Blankenship's working on these on here tonight, but wants to give you some flexibility. And again, I think when we look, when you look at this capital improvement, and this is a mixture of general fund, SUA, there's some other SUA items in water and sewer and electric that are a little pretty critical. And I'm not saying to raise the rates, you just do all those. But I think you need to look at the rate structure, and do we need to address some of those? Maybe it's not the recommendation of the study, maybe it's something lesser than that. But we're going to structure that, so you've got, you can look at those. I just, we just want to be able to translate it for you. Here's what you get, here's what people get, this rate increase, or this one, or this. Again, make it descriptive as much as we can in terms of the delivery and service. I mean, as long as you've got your clean water, plenty of it, and the sewer flushes, and your electricity comes on, everybody's pretty happy. You know, changes in the budget won't affect the quality of those three or four things, the trash removal. But those things affect our ability to sustain those in the future. And so, we'll try to come up with a way to give you those kinds of explanations for that. But it's a good, a good adjustment.
I think it's, the water rates are, seem to be particularly hard, because you, you can't see them. You drive on a road every day, so you bounce along, and you see that, but when, when the water does come out of your tap, you know, it's just not in your consciousness. But I think putting off, putting off, putting off our water infrastructure is something that we need to keep in balance with, with that also.
Yeah, it's, we, when we started that series of utility increases, we go back four years, six years ago, seven years ago, you know, we still have so many uncertainties about the call line, and that's everyone's fear, because that's our line of life. And part of that was predicated on that. When we found out through some preliminary studies, it's, it's not a critically dangerous condition, but things can happen. So, it's, I think we've eliminated the panic, but my, my fear about that is when you eliminate the panic, that doesn't mean, "Oh, it's okay, let's forget about fixing it." It's still, we're going to see today that we have to build parallel, we're going to have to replace it. Just because it's better than we thought it was, doesn't make it go to the right. So, we need to... But it's being out of sight, out of mind, hey, they told us it was okay, it's not going to blow up next week, so now we're all happy, everybody comfortable. Well, there could be a danger of being too company. So, we just need to keep that. But it's good.
These budget numbers do have the existing rates in.
Yes, just doesn't include any rate increases.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff? Okay.
Thank you, Glenn. We'll come back with some revisions. I'll give you a report on it on that May 4th meeting. We may not be having all placed out to really go into the public domain stage. We will, we'll reset the schedule. But I think at this point, it would be probably, in fairness to everyone who's trying to shoot from the jigger's view on the...
Thank you, Squy. I really do.
Agreed, and a little bit of progress each time?
Yes, ma'am.
Seeing something, that's, that's good. Easier to digest, I understand.
We really appreciate you coming tonight to the meeting. Any of you who were here, thanks for coming. Thanks for coming to this meeting. It really helps. You know, it's like, it's like a couple of you were saying, you didn't hear anything really, it's like, "How did it make a thing?" But people were very complimentary, they feel comfortable about the services, but there was some comments to say, you know, they need to believe what you're, as they were concerned about. That's something real important to staff, that that kind of affects how we manage.
We very much appreciate it. People came out on this rainy, rainy, rainy Monday, and took the time to tell us. And I received several emails, I'm certain other people did as well, and so, any way you can get your message to us, and, and what you would like to see is important to us right now. This is the time to do it. So, I encourage people to keep sending the emails, making the phone calls, visiting us. Very important. Right. So, next on the agenda is executive session. Mr. Dorman.
Two items tonight. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307(c)(10) for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of posts to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater, because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and violate the confidentiality of the business. And secondly, request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307(b)(3) for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Naher?
Yes.
The motion to move into executive session passes 4 to 0, and the time is...
7:43.
7:43, and we are now going into executive session. Yeah. And we won't be making any decisions after...
Right.
After executive session.
I mean, everyone will have to go outside and review the council.